God bless you, my brothers and my sisters in Christ Jesus, our risen Savior. And so we thank God for this another day, another week that He has blessed us. And so we give Him all the glory and give Him all the praise for all that He has done, He is doing and that He will do. Sending it to all of our new hopeians and sending it to all of our friends and family that shares with us each week during this, during this segment, during this hour. And so we encourage you to take a moment and invite a family member, invite a friend to be able to tune in and to be blessed by this ministry here at the New Hope Church. Certainly, I want to invite you again, those who may be in our area, especially during this holiday season and certainly you do your good to come by, wish it with us here at the New Hope Number One Baptist Church here in the great city of Thomasville, Clark County, and certainly you will be blessed to be a part of our morning worship, Sunday School at nine thirty and then our morning worship at eleven o'clock. And certainly, you will be, we'll be blessed. You won't leave the same way you came. Amen. God bless your heart, God keep. Let us pray. Greetings, God, our Father. We thank you so kindly for all your many rich blessings. Thank you for another day that you blessed us, another week that you kept us, you another week, you smiled on us, and God, we just owe you all the glory, all the praise. And God, we thank you for things as well as they are. Oh, God, we ask that thou forgive us now of all of our sins, our sins that ever before us. Blood out our transgressions, oh, God. Continue to cleanse us, continue to wash us in your blood. Oh, God, we praying now for mankind everywhere. Look on us, oh, Father, with our pity, our compassion, our mercy. And Lord, we just want to notice that we are the clay and you are the pot. Continue to mold us, continue to shape us, oh, God, in what you will have us to be. Oh, we pray, God, for not only mankind, praying for our world, praying that God for our leaders and praying, God, for just our country and our world in a whole. And now, God, we ask that thou would just look on those who going through season of sickness, going through season of bereavement, season of discouragement, season of loneliness. That, God, we just pray that you just stretch forth with your hands right now. Heal, deliver, set free. God, you know who they are. You know them name by name, and God, you know them by condition by condition. And God, we know that you still our bond in Gitya. You still our healer. Heal all manner of sickness and disease and, oh, God, whatever discomfort that they may be dealing with. God, you still, the sweet I know. God, we still are not recognized. The storms gonna rise, but God, you still gonna be a God that is in the midst of our storms with us. Thank you, that God, for your everlasting presence. We ask now that you come in now in the personal Holy Spirit, touch our spiritual ears that we may be able to hear. Our eyes, we can see, our hearts, that we can accept what you have to say to us on this day. We ask now you let the words of our mouth and the meditation of our heart be accepted within our sight, oh, Lord, my rock and my redeemer. And all the people of God said, amen. All right, let's get right into our discussion as we're still dealing with how to be blessed. How to be blessed. And so today we want to deal with confession. I want to deal with confession. And I'm a firm believer that our confession is essential for each believer, dealing with their happiness, dealing with having a peace of mind. And, 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 and above all is that confession can, if it's, if it's practice regularly and, and according to the scripture is that it's the best antidote that the Lord has given us to defeat the sin problem in our lives. Okay? All right, all right, confession. And so, and so, so, so keep in mind is that, is that, is that when we're talking about being blessed, is that, is that, is that we're talking about that good working definition of being blessed is to be especially happy and content, to have that inner peace within and to be confident and to be full of fear. All right, that, that's what, that, that, that's, that's, that's good working definition of being blessed. So, so let's, 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 let's turn our Bibles to the thirty-second number of Psalms and, and see what David has to, to say as addressing this confession situation, this confession matter, okay? In Psalms number thirty-two is that, is that we see David confessing his own personal sin. And, 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 and after he confessed his own personal sin, is that David received forgiveness. Oh, yeah, he received forgiveness. And, and when you know that in verse number one is that he says, blessed is the man. He's not talking about materialistic, not talking about using that word blessed to, 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 it's about riches and, 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 and to claiming and, and all that kind of stuff. No, he's talking about having inward peace, having, to be content, to have confidence. And so he says, blessed is the man whose transgression is forgiven. All right, whose sin is covered. Yeah, that, 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 that's, that's, that's somebody bold, strong individual who can give a testimony of what has, has occurred in his life. And, and, and when you keep reading in verses two and three, I'm gonna just jump over, read it when you get a chance, is that, is that, is that when you, you see David start talking about how happy, how stressful, how sleepless, uh, 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 he were, how he felt physically, discomfort, because why, Pastor, I'm glad you asked, because, uh, uh, was at a point that he, he had refused, uh, to confess his sin. Oh, oh, yeah, he, he was going through, he had all these, uh, 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 symptoms. Uh, let me, let me say it again. Read it in verses two and three. Is that, is that he was unhappy? He was stressed out. He was having sleepless nights, sleepless day. He couldn't find no rest at all because he refused to confess his sin. And, and on, on top of that is that David felt God's hand, what, what had lifted him. He could not, he could not feel the hand of God. So, so he was, he was what? He was unhappy. He, he was disturbed. Yeah, 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 yeah. He, 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 he was, he was disturbed. And, and, and when you kind of look at what his state of mind, his state of mind were is that he was in a depressed, yeah, what, what a whole lot of people are dealing with today is that, is that, is that they are, are dealing with depression. And, and, and I'm, I'm not no psychologist, I'm not, I, 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 I just took some classes in psychologists, but, 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 but I, I, I don't profess to be no psychologist. But, but I, I do believe that when I look at the Word of God, listen at me, brothers and sisters, when I look at the Word of God and look at how depressed, look at how, uh, uh, people are, are in a state of depression, and you, you can't just blame it on the pandemic. Oh, Lord, help us today. Can't, can't just blame it on the pandemic and going through inflation and going through all of this. It is that, is that a lot of people are depressed. And when they, when, when, when you kind of analyze it and get down to the root of it is that, is that their depression is a result of them refusing to confess their sin. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Let me, let me say it again. Is that a lot of people, I'm not, I'm not at nobody in particular, but when you look at, uh, 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 how statistics have, 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 have shown folks who are in mental, going through some mental, uh, 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 areas in their life, that they are depressed, is that, is that I, if I was a bed man, I, I don't, I don't, I don't like the bed, but if I was a bed man, is, is that, is that, is that they can, they can deal, they can get over their, 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 their depression if they, uh, turn to the Word of God and do what David declared, or what David did is that he confessed his sin. He confessed his sin, and not only did he confess his sin, but he forsake his sins, okay? And, and, and I, and I, and I think, I think, I think that's where a whole lot of, uh, uh, individuals are dealing with is that they have become too stubborn. Oh, look at that word, that they have become too stubborn. They, 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 they're so stubborn, press on their own sadness and have forsaken the will of God. And you, and you, and you cannot shift the blame. No, no, you can't shift the blame on what's going on in our world. Just because a person is unhappy is that, is that, is that, is that they can't shift the blame on God. No, you can't, you can't, you can't, you can't, you can't shift the blame on God because you've lost your joy. Because things are not as pleasant, uh, things are not going as you felt, feel like they're going. And, and, and you know, I don't want to even go that route, but even in the political, you know, is that, is that we, you know, you, you, you got, you got, you got the, the Republicans who blaming the Democrats, you got the Democrat who blaming the Republicans. You got, and all of them is blaming the President and all that kind of stuff. Is that, is that, is that, uh, uh, is that you just got, you got this, this unrest that is going on in the world. And so, and so, and so when we see David, David said, I had to confess that I've done wrong. That I've done wrong. And so, and so, and so, and so, so, so confession is good for the soul. May want to write that down. Confession is good to the soul. If you remain silent, uh, 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 is that, is that, is that thank God for that, uh, that agent? Thank God for that stability. Thank God for that, 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 that person that he got that is, that is working on the inside of those of us who are believers, that is called the Holy Spirit. The Holy Spirit, he will, he will convict us. The Holy Spirit will convict us. The Holy Spirit will, will, will press upon us, uh, uh, get us to a point that we start acknowledging, we start confessing, we start speaking about our sin because our sin ought to bring discomfort, okay? And, 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 and just keep in mind what John, what John said, that Jesus said in John chapter ten is, is, is that, is that Jesus said that I came to do what? Bring us life. I came to give, bring life, but I also came that you may have life more abundantly. But, 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 but when you look at what he says in that verse ten of, of St. John chapter ten, he said, but, 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 but Satan, the thief, is that, is that, is that be aware of his purpose. His purpose is to what? To steal and to destroy. Oh, yeah, yeah, I know y'all have read that. I know y'all read that. That, 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 that's the purpose of Satan, is that he come to steal and to destroy. Is that, is that he want us to remain, Satan want us to remain in a state of depression. Huh? He, he want, he want, he want us to stay away from being blessed by God. And so it's up to us is to identify those areas in our lives that, that, that try is to come in and to remove our joy. We, 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 we have, we have to be alert. We have to be aware. There's good teaching today is that we have to stay alert of, of those areas, those things that is trying to remove our faith, to remove our peace, to remove our confidence. And above all is that, is that, is that we have to be aware and, and alert of those things that is trying to break up our relationship with God Almighty. Never takes your, never underestimate the power of Satan, okay? He want to break up our relationship with God. So, so, so when you, when you, when you read that thirty-second number of Psalms, is that after David confesses his sins, is that he puts himself in a position to share with others how we ought to be able to deal with our personal sins. And the best antidote of dealing with our sin is confession. And when you turn over to that fifth chapter of, of James, James brings up, brother of Jesus bringing up everything, uh, uh, thought. And James chapter five, verse sixteen, is that, is that James write to the believers, and he said that there was a need, notice what he says, to confess our faults one to another. Now, what is, what, 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 what is James talking about here? Is that when you look at the, at the contextual, when you look at this barricope closely, is, is that, is that James is writing because one group in that particular church uh, 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 felt that they were spiritually superior to another. Now, 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 if we are open and honest about our sin, we will have a tough time becoming proud and arrogant when it's dealing with our sins. And, and, and you know that it is difficult to, to, to maintain a, a, a spirit of superior when we are open and honest about our own shortcomings. That, that, that's why, that's why we have to be careful pointing fingers at someone because they have, you know, they have slipped and they have failed and, and, and fallen and all that kind of, you know, uh, they, 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 they have, they have done some things that, 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 that wasn't pleasing to God, and they have perhaps backslide. Because when you start pointing fingers, is that you fail to realize is that you point one finger, you got three or four, at least three that is pointing back at you. Are you hearing me? So, 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 so we have to be careful about pointing fingers because we all have some shortcomings. And so, so when I, when I, when, when we look closely at what James is writing and what James is saying, I don't believe that James want believers, listen at what James, now, this, this is my take, this is my belief, this is my position, when it comes down to what James is talking about, confessing our faults to one another, for it's going to the priest and all that, going to man. Is, is, is that, is that James, James want us to understand is that, is that as believers is that we don't have to share every dog detail of our sin. But we have to be honest and don't, and don't, don't, don't be in a position of thinking that we are holier than doubt, that we are perfect, that we are living above sin, that we don't have no shortcomings, that we don't have the deal with sin. No, Paul, James said, don't put yourself in that position that you, that, that, that you are superior over others. Huh? No, no, no. We was born, it's in our DNA, we was born in sin, shaping iniquity. All right? So, 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 so what James is, is, is reminding us is, is, is that, is that, is that, is that, is there someone else who i- is coming along and who, who, who is coming along in the faith, and they have some, uh, some, 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 some shortcoming, they have some, some slips, they have some fall, is that we who are spiritually is that we want to restore them back. And, and, and the best way, the best way that I've discovered that we can do that is to share our own personal testimony, okay? Or, or you, or you listening to me? Uh, 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 the pastor Paul, yeah, Paul had, uh, a say about this confession when he talked to his son in the ministry, Timothy. If you turn to First Timothy, uh, chapter one, verse fifteen, is that, is that Paul, Paul said, he, Paul, Paul said, I want you to look at me. I, 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 I am an, I am a prime example of being a sinner. Paul, Paul, Paul says, he said, I'm not just a sinner, I'm a chief. I am, I am the chief of sinners. Hmm? Yeah, Paul, 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 Paul messed me up because he didn't say I used to be a, a real bad sinner. No, no, he, when, when you look at the language there in that fifteen, uh, in that, in that, in that fifteen verse, he uses, he said, I am the chief. I, I am, talking about the present tense. Yes, I'm saved, but he says that even so, since I've been saved, I'm still struggling with sin. He said, yeah, I'm still struggling with, with sin. And, and, and he told the church in, in Philippians, Philippians chapter three, verse number twelve, he declared boldly and recognized that he has not, that he has not already attained perfection, but he's still struggling to become the man that God had what called him to be. Read it when you get a chance. Verse twelve and verse thirteen and verse fourteen. Y'all know what he says in verse fourteen. He said, but I'm gonna press. Okay? Now, now, this, 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 now, this is good teaching. I'm forgetting about the things which are behind me, but I'm gonna press. And you keep turning over, I'm talking about, dealing with confession. The scriptures, the Word of God help us out. Uh, 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 John says something in First John, chapter one. First John, chapter one. Turn that right quickly. First John, chapter one, uh, verse, uh, First John, chapter one, when you start in verse number five, is, is that John says something here. He said, this is the message we have heard from him and declare to you that God is light and in him there is no darkness at all. Verse six said, if we claim to have fellowship with him and yet walk in dark, we lie and do not live the truth. Look at verse number seven. But if we walk in the light as he is in the light, we have what? Fellowship, one, we have, we have fellowship with one another. And the blood of Jesus, his son, purifies us from all, listen what it says, sin. Listen to verse number eight. If we claim to be without sin, we what? Deceive ourselves and the truth is not in us. I love verse number nine. He said, if we confess our sin, look at that, go to that word, confess. If we confess our sins, he who is Christ Jesus is faithful and just and will forgive us of our sin and purify us from all unrighteousness. But then what he says in verse nine, if we claim we have not sinned, we make him out to be a liar and his word is not in us. So, listen at me, so, listen at, listen at me. Uh, 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 John says that if we going to overcome this sin problem is that it become essential that we do confession. Yeah. It's, it's just, it's just like, it's just like going to AA meeting, Alcoholics Anonymous meeting, is, is that, is that, is that, I know you have been to one, I'm, just like me, I've seen it on TV and I've seen it in different movies, is that, is that, is that, is that that person has to get up and, and, and say hello, my name is so-and-so, and I'm an alcoholic. Is, is, is that, is that, is that, is that, is that if they, if, if they don't say I'm an alcoholic, they say, well, I got, I have a problem with drinking. And the purpose of that is there are some steps there, is that, is that, is that the first step in order to get some help is that that person has to have to admit, has to confess that they got a problem. So, what, what are you saying, Pastor? Is that every time we come before God, every time we come into the house of God, is that we need to acknowledge, we need to confess in the Lord's house that what? That I'm a sinner. And I'm seeking to overcome my sin problem. Need to open up. That's what, that's what, that's what, that's what I, I keep saying it. That's what I'm driving it. We need to open up and be honest about our, our problem that is called sin. There's no big sin, there are no little sins, sin is just sin. And I love what John says, is that, that if we open up and confess our sins, guess what? The Lord promised us that he is going to forgive us of our sins. Jesus will cleanse us up. That's a lesson there. That's, that, that, that's a lesson there, is that we are un, we are unable to clean our, clean, clean our own selves up. Jesus had to become sin. He became sin. He was on the cross when he cried out to the Father, forgive them. That's good teaching now. He said, forgive them, for they know not what they do. What, what, since Jesus is a, is, is, is a spin image of God, since Jesus is a part of the Godhead, why, why didn't he say, I forgive you? No, when you look at it, is that he became sin. Sin, 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 sin can't, sin can't forgive sin. Only body that can forgive is God. So, 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 when we confess, he promised, he offer a promise to us that he will forgive, he will clean us up. So, 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 so keep that in mind, is that sin is something we cannot overcome on our own. And that's why we need the Christ Jesus to help us. He is the one that can cleanse us. Writing in some notes that he cannot cleanse us until we make that first step of admitting that we need some help. That's good teaching right there. He cannot cleanse us. He cannot wash us until we admit to him, Lord, I need your help. And he promised us according to First John. And he promised us according to first John, chapter one, is that he promised us that he would cleanse us from all unrighteousness. So, I wanna wrap it up, so when we confess our sin. God begins to work in our lives through the Holy Spirit, that's the work of the Holy Spirit. And the Holy Spirit begins to help us to overcome. But listen at me, but when we ignore our sin. We are just fooling ourselves. And we cannot be forgiven or cleansed. Until we omit our sin. So we want to be blessed. If we want, if, if, if we want, if we want to be blessed, if we, if, if sin have, have robbed us of some things and we want to return back. The blessings of God, we must open. And honestly omit our sin. And according to the word of God, not only with God. We don't have to go into details when it come down to others. But then we have to tell others, yes. He's still working on me. Okay? Alright, God bless you, God keep, you've gotten something out of uh, what we have discussed on today. Is that I want to be blessed, I want, I want, I want to be, I want to be blessed by God, I want God to, to show enough. Give me that peace, give me that confidence. And he can do that if we just open up to him. God bless and God keep you, uh, I pray that you will have a blessed Thanksgiving. And, and Senator, uh, never forget. That every day is a day of Thanksgiving, happy Thanksgiving to you and God bless you is my prayer. Let us pray, gracious God, our Father, we thank you for all things, we bless you because of who you are. And Father, you don't do anything else, you have done enough for us, God, we acknowledge that, that, that our sins are ever before, but thank you that you know, and that you know. That you just don't look uh, uh, above beyond our faults and our sin, but thank you that you look at us. You look at our sin, thank you for meeting our every needs. And we ask all these blessings in your son Jesus's name, amen and amen.